It called me to the order and to please rise from the place of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to alter or add to the agenda?
If there's no additions, I would like to make the motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of September 3rd.
No one has any objections or corrections. I'll make a motion that the agenda or the minutes be approved as presented.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes for the meeting of September 3rd as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is financial report. Colleen?
We began the month with ninety-three thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-four cents. We took in receipts of sixty-nine thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-nine cents, and made dispersments of twenty-five thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Like to make a motion to accept the financial report as submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the financial report as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item, under correspondence, item A, is St. Clair County Metro Planning Fall Workshop. So far, this is all we have. When the county commissioners met here, Mr. Coffin, we talked to him for a minute, and he didn't know what was gonna be offered as of that date. And as of today, we have not received the formal brochure they usually send. So, when we get it, we'll get it to you, and you can decide if you wanna go.
But they're looking for October twenty-ninth?
Yep. Okay. Item B. Everyone should be aware that November 5th, there's gonna be a special school election for Richmond Community Schools that are requesting a bond, similar to the one that they had last, they requested earlier. And... Those of you that live in Casco in the Richmond School District, yes, you have to go to Columbus to vote or get an absentee ballot from Columbus. And because we didn't know if there was going to be an election in Casco, our November bargaining date is gonna be on Monday, November 4th. Because if one of the other schools would've had a special election, it would've been also on the 5th, and that would've been the same, the first Tuesday of the month. Any questions on any of that? Okay, moving on. Item C. We got a letter from Mr. Fred Poppy, which he's done for a number of years over the ditch in front of his house. It's not a well-drained area. He's kind of like on the apex of the road where it's a long way either way. Last year, the County Road Commission talked to Mr. Poppy and offered him a co-pay type, an agreement to do his ditch. And unfortunately, he was building a pole barn, and he didn't have the money at that time. So, maybe next year, we can offer him some type of a co-pay to do his ditch next year.
Where's this place at?
He's on Putty Gut, about half, almost halfway between Beethee and Church Road.
Okay, alright, yeah, I remember that. Didn't he have lots of trees that were right there?
Well, his septic field's in front of his home, and it's just about level with the ground. And there's no ditch there, so when it gets wet, I don't think his septic field works real good. So, it would require about three hundred feet of ditching and at least two culverts. So, hopefully, next year, we can do something. Okay. Moving on. Old business. Just kind of an update on what's going on. The bridge on Lindsay Road over the, I believe it's a Casco drain, was removed and two hours culverts were put in. That job is all done. A couple weeks ago, they sprayed the frag mighty, and they've waited for the spray to work, and now they're starting to mow.
They, did they do that all through the township?
Yeah.
Okay, my brother-in-law there at the corner of Putty Gut Church, he was asking me that, that he...
Well, but they didn't have the best, I don't know if they didn't have a good spray pattern because, like you're going down a county line, for a hundred feet, it killed, killed it dead. I mean, the next hundred feet's greener than green, then the next hundred feet's dead or dead. So, I don't know if their spray mechanism drifted, or it was windy. So, as you ride around, some are damaged and some aren't. But they're supposed to start mowing. Hopefully, they'll get it mowed through the late year mow. We're gonna look at that next year and see if we can get an earlier mowing date.
Those frag mighties are, I mean, God knows things that could last forever.
But if you look where they mowed, the frag mighties, the first time when they mowed by the road, they're pretty much nothing there. They didn't really grow back much.
No, they don't.
So, I'm hoping to get a mowing date earlier next year. I was looking at the minutes from years ago. In the one year, the mowing, they set a date of August 15th as part of the agreement. So, something to discuss.
Yeah, those aren't thing, they sure blocked our views at a lot of intersections.
Well, they did the corners pretty good, but there's some homes that are tough getting houses.
Yeah, 'cause mine's one. And they totally missed the frag mighties before my house, but got all my property where there are.
So, all your grass is dead?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, dear.
Won't block your view though.
No, well, yeah, well, it does, because the frag mighties are still growing.
But they'll be there to mow.
North of my house.
Yeah, my brother-in-law was asking, 'cause he grows some organic wheat and that, and he asked me certified that he had, using no pesticides or fertilizers on it. He was, and I said, "Yeah, I think they're gonna be spraying the frag mighties."
Yeah, they sprayed them.
They did spray them.
Paving repairs supposedly St. Clair Highway is done. And I hope it's good. I'm not an expert on that stuff. They have about five other places they have to patch, some blacktop that's not done. We got all the millings we're getting for the year. They're all distributed. And the ditching, we have a work order approved and signed for a ditching job on Putty Gut Road. And I'm assuming they're gonna get it this fall yet. So, that's about it for the road commission stuff.
I have to say, where the millings were put on Lindsay Road, 'cause I drive it all the time, is amazing. It is amazing.
Hopefully, it stays good. We'll see how Meldrum does. I think it's gonna...
It really makes a difference. I mean...
I'll have to drive down there and check it out.
Please do. And Putty Gut's is good, but I don't travel that as much. Lindsay, I come to work every day on that road, and it's totally different.
Okay, any questions on any of that with the roads and stuff? If not, we'll move on. The vacant property sale is tentatively scheduled for the middle of the month. Either later this week or next week, we'll be setting the date for that. But in the motion last month, you motioned for me to be the signatory for the letter of conditions. And I ran it past Mr. Delosky, and he said, "Well, to be on the safe side, get a motion to designate the supervisor as signatory on any transactions involving the property, 'cause we have to do the quick claim deed and all this stuff." So, that's why it's on the agenda.
Support.
Okay, moved and support, designate the supervisor as signatory for all vacant property transactions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, moving on. New business. Our building inspector, Mr. Suez, who was recently also hired by Columbus Township, and he has mentioned it a little bit, but he would like us to consider his request for an increase in the fee inspection. So, he's been tossing it around a little bit, and... Because most townships use a value percentage to get the fee. And then, once they get that, then the inspector gets seventy-five percent, and the township gets twenty-five percent. Or we have a little different schedule. Even though it costs us a considerable amount of money for a building department, for the secretary and all that good stuff, we do pretty well on pole barns and stuff, but we really, we really take a beating township-wise on new homes. But, so I'm researching it, and Mr. Suez is out of town this week. So, it'll be on the agenda next month. And he can come, and I'll get just more information, and you can make a decision from there. Currently, inspections primarily are forty-five dollars. In oh-nine, they were raised from forty dollars. So, there was a twelve percent increase four years ago. And now, he's asking for eleven percent. He would like to go to fifty dollars. So, give you something to think about by getting more, getting it from other townships. And I will say, most of the ones that do have an inspection fee separate from that formula, most of them are fifty. There was one that was cheaper, but they just switched over to that formula thing, so I'm not really sure on that one. But I'm still researching it.
And I have, I have looked at it, and, and he's asking for more money on pole barns and sheds. I don't think so. You know, the others I can see on homes, they're more involved, but a little shed and a pole barn is just...
It's a big shell.
Right. You know, so, but I haven't made my, I just want you to be aware of what I feel. So, you know, you know where I'm coming from. The rest I don't have a problem with, but those, you know, pools, pools I think are staying the same.
Yeah, I don't think he asked for any.
But it's the same thing with a shed and pole barn. So, walk through.
See, his main source of revenue aside, he does a review, and then he does, but when you get a new home, you're talking ten, eleven inspections, and that's where his money's really...
Oh, yeah.
I can remember going, like, damn, the footings inspection, rough and pile, three long.
Well, but then some townships don't call for inspection for rat walls and cement floors.
Paper before.
And I asked him about that, and he said, you know, "It's not a big deal, but if the contractor cheats the homeowner, what are you gonna do, you know, if you don't go out there?"
Right.
So...
Yeah.
So, well, that'll be on the agenda next month unless Mr. Suez can't make the meeting, 'cause he should be here.
My, my earliest memory of this hall, when my dad was a building inspector, he would have to come every meeting and make a report on the building activity, what inspections. Yeah, him and all the inspector, I remember sitting right over Mike was, just a little tight.
And they all, wow.
Yeah. I know on some of those meetings, being somewhat lively.
Okay, moving on. Item B, retirement of cemetery sexton. Mr. James Johnson has been the sexton for our cemetery for at least twenty years. It's hard to tell from the records because, well, he's not paid by the township. He's paid for digging the graves and stuff, so the minutes don't reflect it. But I know he was twenty years or better. And he told me he's retired, and we wish him well in retirement, thank him for all his work. And if no one has an objection, I will send him a letter of appreciation from the board to that effect. And we're doing a little research in that area, and we'll be, hopefully, next month, we'll be naming somebody else as the sexton. And it's their job to open and close the graves, and we're working on the footings for the headstone, which is... It's a whole nother world, but they really wouldn't believe it. It's unbelievable. And so, we're working on that. So, hopefully, you know, we have somebody ready if somebody would need the service, but...
Mr. Johnson, how many graves would he dig over those? Couldn't be bad.
Well, I don't know where else he was sexton. I know he worked at other cemeteries.
We didn't have a lot.
No.
Hollow ground there.
Well, that's a kind of a negative on the headstones, because a lot of cemeteries only pour them twice a year. And then they do them all, and you get a ready mix truck.
Right.
Where he's lucky over here, if he gets one a year, so does, you know.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, he did serve the township well.
Yes, he did.
And I'd like to thank him, and hope he has a good retirement. Okay, item C. I put some stuff in the packet about the septic field. We had a company that was pumping our tanks every ninety days. And we were getting a very good deal price-wise. And apparently, he had a deal at a disposal, I believe it was Pontiac, I'm not certain, and that deal no longer exists. So, he told us that he was gonna go from a hundred and ninety dollars to five-twenty. So, I called around, and the best deal I could get from local was three-ninety. And I put the yearly amount in your update. So, last year, just out of curiosity, I wanted to see if a field was feasible, and I had Mr. Cameron from the Board of Health came out and said, "Yes, you could put a septic field in," 'cause I'd always been told that you couldn't. He said, "Yes, you could." So, I got a price last year, and it was approximately six thousand dollars. Well, we were only paying eight hundred a year, so the payback was nearly eight years. So, when the price now doubled, well, now you're down to four years, which makes it much more enticing. So, I did ask four local contractors to give me a price. I have three in, the other one's not in yet. But by checking the tanks, it doesn't appear that we might be putting that much out in ninety days. So, right now, I'm gonna get the bids in, then we're gonna monitor the tanks. If we can go six months, the price is back down to eight hundred a year. But if we can't, then I'll come to the board, and you guys can make a decision, you know, or it may be spring till we do that. There's a little bit of cost involved, because you have to put a pump in, and you have to run electricity from the hall up to the pump. And the field would be out front, and it shouldn't change the landscaping much.
Okay, no, we're in Luke's parking lot or anything like that?
No, no, that's a parking lot. It's gonna be just, basically, we'll probably move it, but it's between a tree and the sign that says Casco Township, twenty feet wide, sixty feet long. It'll start on the north side of the sidewalk and go north. So, you're probably talking, without getting all the bids in, between six and seven thousand dollars.
But if the tanks don't fill up this quickly, we may get that deal of being them being pumped out?
Yeah, well, you gotta have some way of monitoring them. You don't wanna flood back into the basement. I'd have to, you'd have to probably run a wire out there to put an alarm system.
Tell them to go over to your bar or something.
Yeah, well, that ain't happening. Got news for that.
So, let's see how long it takes to get full, and then we...
You don't have a long dipstick?
No, you open the lid, you can see the thing.
We do. We just don't have anybody to use it, you know.
None of us are going in.
So, we'll get the bids, and then we'll, we'll monitor how long it takes to fill up. And then we can get a pretty accurate picture of payback, you know? I think if you can get it, if you can pay back in five years, it's probably worth looking at. Okay, eight, eh, that's a little on the outside, but... And it's only gonna cost more to put the field in. Someday, you probably gonna wanna field.
Yeah. Years ago, did they just allow like a farmer to suck it up and put on the fields out here?
Well, they used to let the septic guys pump your tank and pump it out in the field. And I don't think they let them do that anymore.
Do you remember when they, do they, do they still do that injection stuff?
Yes.
They do, but first...
Remember a few years ago that they did that?
But first, they come out, and they soil test your ground for about a hundred different things. And they certify with the EPA, the DNR, and everybody else. And as to, and whatever they bring out from the place, they test. So, they can tell you, "We put thirteen thousand gallons to the acre, this many parts per million, this is what you're gonna have when you're done." So, it's not a matter of just opening a spigot and driving around and certi-
It's partially processed though, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, they just, they take it out of the lagoons, like in Richmond and Memphis. But each one has, they do all the testing there to get those numbers that they turn into the EPA and the DNR before they inject it. And they can pump, some places, they can pump it on top of the ground, yeah, but they still have to do all that testing. So, let's see what happens on that.
Yeah, when I stationed Oakdale, my duties actually were... Right in those sugarcane fields, and Oakdale farmers in August used to put the human waste on it.
That was right. That's no different than animal waste.
Well, it's a subtropical island in August. That was...
Same difference though.
No, I think I bet to different.
I was there too.
Yuck.
Okay.
Moving on.
Moving on. Item D. We got a call a couple times this year from someone that's interested, and they've asked before about renting the park. So, I looked into it a little more, and if you don't rent it, you're probably gonna have to spend some money and start cleaning it up, or it's gonna all go to brush, and then it's very costly to clean up. If you rent it, when you rent it, you pay tax, same as anybody else. And the tax would be, on that parcel would be, if you pay the eighteen mil non-homestead, would be about sixty-three hundred dollars. But if you can farm fifty-one percent of it, which is approximately fifty acres, you could get the ag exemption, and then you'd only be paying around thirty-six hundred dollars. The last person that farmed it certified forty-eight acres, which is, you know, that close to fifty acres. Looking, I had Mike go out with his ATV and kind of do some measuring and stuff. I think if you decided to rent it, you could hit the fifty acres to get the exemption. And even at that, you'd be talking better than seventy dollars an acre for rent. Now, the person that called me, I told them about the sixty-three hundred dollars, and they said they were still interested, which just about knocked me off my chair. So, I asked the planning commission to look at this, to see, get some feedback from them, and the minutes are in your packet. And the gist of, they discussed it last month. And without getting to the next step, it sounded, the consensus was mostly that if they were gonna allow that in that zoning, they would do it as a special land use. So, I'm just running it by the board, because if everybody on the board says, "We don't ever wanna rent it," well, then I don't want the planning commission wasting their time, 'cause they're gonna have to have a public hearing.
What?
I don't wanna rent it.
You don't wanna rent it? You'd rather pay somebody to mow it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to see it rented.
Why's the reason you wouldn't wanna rent it?
We had a lot of problems last time with renting it. I can't remember all the logistics of it, but we went round and round with people.
Yeah, but I collect, there were drainage problems, and they wanted to, us to...
Well, he wanted a rebate, because it was a wet year, but that was that guy. Other people don't do that. You would put it out for bids for more than one year, because the first year, they're gonna have to do a lot of work to clear. I'm in favor of it, because when we first started, when I started thinking about it, I thought if we could clear whenever all the dust settled, if we could clear a thousand dollars a year for the Park and Recs Fund, it'd be, it would be good. To do that, though, you would probably have to get about, close to ninety dollars an acre rent. And we'll see.
If it wasn't the, the problems with like the renter, if that wasn't affecting it, would you have any problems with renting?
No, I guess I wouldn't. The thing is, are they only gonna do it for a year, and we're going through all these hoops? Or are they gonna do it year after year?
Well, I know in Richmond Township, rented theirs, they, they had a, they took bids on a two-year thing. I would probably look at a three-year and give them a discount the first year because of all the brush and stuff they gotta get under control.
Okay.
And then, I would, certainly, they would have to sign a contract for that amount, so they're obligated.
Is there a subsidy involved, agricultural subsidy, that makes it more worthwhile to do it at a higher rent? Because you were surprised they were willing to consider sixty acres.
Subsidy for who?
I don't know. I mean, is there some other incentive that makes it a little more connective? Because you, you seem to feel that maybe that isn't enough.
Well, right now, commodities are very high, even though they've come down the last couple months. And the way the system is set up now with crop insurance, it makes it so you're pretty much minimum risk. And that's really the trip right now. You see people farming places that ten years ago, they wouldn't even look at. And that's because of commodity prices and the crop insurance that's available. So, I don't know.
Do we, another thing is, sometimes we got flowers and stuff growing in these fields that are protected. You know, do we know that there's none there, that they're gonna be ripped up and... You know, we have some wildflowers that are protected. I don't know that we have any. They may be just in the wooded part, but that's another thing. How about the animals too, that we subsidize on that?
They will come out and eat the crops.
Yeah.
Well, you would put in there then, you know, if you're only renting the tillable soil.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the only...
You have no rights to the woods.
The only wildflowers that are protected are trillium in the woods, and they grow in the woods. They don't grow in over the fields.
There was another one, the, I had them growing in my yard for a while, jack and pulpit. They're protected too.
But they're shade, a jack and pulpit is a shade.
If they're naturally grown, I mean, if, you know, if you had some grown by your house, that some seed got in there...
They, I didn't plant them. They're the actual...
Well, that, that the seed would be airborne, but a jack and pulpit is, is a shade plant.
Okay, then that answers my question.
But the other side of that coin is, if you're gonna pay somebody, you're gonna bush hog it.
Yeah, they're not gonna look for...
They're not gonna be looking, they're, 'cause I would, I did go over and look for the road, and the part that was tilled before, there's some Russian owls growing and a few things up by the road.
Those you don't want.
And the rest is all weeds, and they're like chest-high, so the weeds have tendency to choke flowers out pretty well.
Getting things out, yeah.
But, no, we wouldn't, we're not doing anything with the woods. That would be clearly stipulated. And I don't know, I talked to Mr. Broschew, the head of the county Park and Recs, and told him, and he thought it would be a good idea to farm it, to clear it.
I agree.
And get a clean.
I think the brush control is a real issue, and it can cost, put this in the, later down the road.
And he said, to his knowledge, there was no grants anywhere that would require the land to be fowl for any amount of time before you apply for the grant. So, you wouldn't be harming yourself in any way. So, if, you know, if nobody has any real objections, and Patty has some, and we can research it. But I'll tell the planning commission to, is it good enough to have more go ahead, 'cause they're gonna have to change the ordinance to do this. And then the township will have to apply for the special land use, and then put it out for bids and see what happens.
And the neighbors would be notified.
Oh, they'll be notified for the special land use. Yep, everybody within three hundred feet, which is, could be quite a few people.
We have a couple of neighbors who have been our guardians of our park land.
Yep, but you can't let it go to brush. If you mow it down, it's no longer weeds. There are trails, and there are ATV trails where people go in there. Probably hunters. I don't know. I have no idea.
We had that one. They had a public hearing that one day, by one rocket sled ride that was.
Actually, if you wanted to get hardcore, you could rent the woods for hunting. That's a major deal.
Well...
We'd have to carry that insurance.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I don't think so, but I'm not big on it, 'cause then people get into fights over it, and I don't care that, but I don't know.
They already were in fights over it.
Oh, yeah.
Truly.
But when they have these tax auctions, the deer hunters bid like crazy.
I know.
There's a lot of people asking for permission.
Worthless ground that they wanna deer hunt. Yeah. Okay, so we'll tell the planning commission to move ahead, and I can probably get ahold of the FSA or somebody. We can check out on the flowers. I don't believe there's a wetland there. Doesn't show it on our map. But we'll certainly find out as part of the special land use. You can put in there, you can't, you have to get a wetland determination. Well, we'll certainly find out as part of the special land use, you can put in there, you can't, you have to get a wetland determination.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that. Okay, moving on.
Okay.
Item three E, resolution. Two thousand thirteen dash fourteen. In front of you, I handed you a couple of things. We got the report from county planning. If you read the last paragraph on the bottom, you tell her there was a couple of things that they spotted that needed to be corrected, so I also gave you a copy of a corrected version. So, I'll give you a minute to read that paragraph on the bottom of here. I put one in the file.
I know, I don't know what I do with them.
Oh, you can read this.
Thank you.
So, what do you guys think of this sub-ordnance?
I don't know.
I think it's over the top, but.
Um, I don't think you have to worry about anybody diving in tomorrow, I'll tell you that.
Well, I think it's, at least it protects the neighbors, it protects the roadways.
Well, see, that's the thing I, I thought it was supposed to do. I didn't know that they were gonna do it for actually opening it a mud bog business.
Yeah, the one they had on Palms Road, after they had the one, everybody I talked to, I looked at it there one day, and so they did their sales. Everybody there, oh, I went to the mud bog, they all went there, they had cars parked a half mile away.
Didn't they have one up on uh, on St. Clair Highway once?
That was just a neighbor messing around.
It was big enough.
But if we.
There's a lot of trucks.
But I see what you're, you're protecting from them coming in and doing that.
Right, no, I, I wanna avoid this um, recording like when the kids were on the dirt bikes. And they're, they're gonna come in, do their presentation on how safe they were, respectful. Four times during people, the neighbors showed up complaining that their kids were cutting through their properties and that. When you have stuff like this, this, like this, that gets so much popularity drawn, it can get out of hand fast. Well, it's still kid, this isn't gonna stop that. What this'll stop is, the only good point is if someone would come and they wanna open one. Okay, and if they wanna do it, they're gonna wanna make a profit. Well, you have allocated part of your township for that purpose, and that's the only place you can do it. If you don't have a place allocated, you're gonna have trouble saying no. If it's just kids having a weekend bash on the neighbor's property, it's no different than it is now. I mean, the neighbors can call the cops and hopefully they'll show up and tell them, don't drag all the mud on the road like they did on Palms Road. Right, well, yeah, this is designed not to do that.
I mean, you can't, you can't legislate, complying with the law.
Yeah, but we could.
But you can stop people that wanna do a big one for profit, where they charge money to, for admission. Because unless they go through all these steps.
Right.
So.
But don't forget, we gotta first and foremost, protect the residents currently living here in the township.
But what if it's the whole neighbors doing it?
There's nothing that says you can't do it on your own property.
Right, so.
Like, you don't go in the county dirt.
You don't, you don't go on the roads dragging the dirt and this and that.
And even then.
The noise and the whatever, that would be up to your complaint to the county sheriff or whoever to come out and handle that.
Well, really, would they do anything?
I don't know.
Even with this ordinance?
If they're on private property, unless they're making too much noise, but if they see mud on the road, they might tell them to knock it off. Well, that's what they did over at, at the church, they said, get out of the parking lot, got it.
That's what Skip was upset about, they were driving over his property.
That was a gold cart.
Yeah, well, they didn't do not, the police did not do anything to the people.
I mean.
I'm just pointing things out, you know what I'm saying? I, I agree, we need a place, but I'm just saying.
I don't agree, we need a place.
I, I know that ordinance is a good idea, but for another reason also, and that is at least, come in, you have to apply, you see a set of guidelines. It sets it off to a more business-like uh, start and, and maybe gives you some leverage.
You get a chance to talk about liability, about the roads, about, you know, your responsibilities.
Or else, like, they had up there, Fort, Fort Gresham Township, underneath that dome, they had the golf course and other stuff, they did that.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I heard that. It was in the wintertime, and I was out like parking lot Sears at some like a billion fees.
You see, it was amplified, wasn't it? Yeah.
I only can imagine the summertime when windows were open.
Yeah.
I could see the neighbors around that area, the complaints they had. That wasn't contained inside, but just the sound.
Yeah, well, but, but then, you know, they must have exceeded a, a, a sound ordinance, a, a noise, a, a ordinance. And that in itself would shut it down, you know, just like uh, partying out on the deck of a, of a restaurant in a residential area. They'll shut you right down, you know? You, you might, you might have start, started out with the ability to do it, but once you disturb the peace after a, above and a, and beyond a certain level, no, they're not going to, it's, it's not going to stay, so.
I have one big reservation about one uh, item in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, and that is post-recite recovery, twelve months.
Oh.
Your little bond and uh.
What, what page is that?
Item twenty, um, the applicant and or operator shall remove all permanently installed fixtures and improvements within twelve months after the operation ceases to exist.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Unless specifically waived by twelve months, that's one of my questions, and how do you enforce it? And if they don't do it, what do you do? What's your recourse?
I guess it would depend what it was. Uh, if it's a special land use, you could maybe either require a bond, a surety bond. Or if you wanted to take legal action, you could probably do that. But it would depend if it's, suppose they put up all kinds of like cement things.
Yeah.
And you like those out of there. That's how you do it. If it's not cement or permanent, it's probably gonna have a problem.
Why twelve months?
Well, we give the cell towers, I think, six months. You know, and uh, just tiny year and everything else, you know, if they close in the summer, they have till next summer. And uh.
About the weather makes, that makes sense, makes sense actually. If you're, you know, into the fall, you're really gonna be in the, into the.
Or if they close, if they close after one season, and they don't know for sure if they're gonna open again, that would give them the next season to see whether they could do something.
So, the uh, the option of a bond exists, if that's appropriate.
Right.
Yeah, for special approval.
That, that's a good answer.
Okay, now on page three, you'll see the numbers on your old one were boofed up. It went from number, what, sixteen to number ten? So, the new copy, so you go from number sixteen to number seventeen. And then in the, then in the old one, it said, number sixteen said no alcohol. And number seventeen said, if you got alcohol, you gotta have insurance. Well, no, you can't have alcohol. So, we deleted the sentence with that in number seventeen. Those are the two changes. The numbers and the alcohol. So, it's up to you.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand thirteen fourteen.
Support.
Moved and supported to adopt resolution two thousand thirteen dash fourteen, the mud bog ordinance, uh, thirty dash eighty-five. Is there any discussion? A roll call vote, please.
All right, Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Me, yes. Bill.
Aye.
And Colleen.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Yeah, I got a handout for you. Take one, pass those down, please.
Okay.
Late Thursday, we got these in, the ones you got in your packets, I just stuffed them in the packet. Basically, uh, because it starts November one, and we did it last October, I was hoping to get it on the meeting. So, they did get a bid to us last Thursday for snow removal. Monday, we got this page I just handed out, and you'll notice the differences. Uh, it'd be the fifth line down after the line across the page, they forgot to put the salty to be done in case of freezing rain on the original one. The amount involved is sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. And that has been exactly the same since two thousand eight. Now, in two thousand eight, they just simply couldn't get anybody else to bid competitively against it.
Okay.
So, they do an excellent job. And uh, some of the other folks that do it head to the city, so you either get it done very early in the morning or later in the day. I don't know if this is a deal or not, but if it, it hasn't changed in six years.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move that we accept this bid.
I'll support.
And continue.
Okay, moved and supported to accept the bid by Early Bird Earls for snow removal from eleven one to four thirty fourteen, an amount of sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. Is there any discussion? Here in the, done with, roll call vote, please.
Colleen.
Yes.
Bill.
Aye.
Me, yes. Joe.
Yes.
And Dan.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, payment of the bills.
If there's no um, questions, then I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported to pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Me, yes. Bill.
Aye.
And Colleen. Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is citizen comments.
Don't think there is any.
Well, is there any?
Maybe.
Any news from the ZBA or planning commission or NEMC?
Yeah, it's a pretty little key right now.
Well, what's the upgrade on having our meetings on either Channel Six or YouTube now?
Well, while they're on YouTube, I've seen them on there.
How about Channel Six?
Bill said at the last meeting, he had put that one on two days after I brought it in, which would have been Wednesday. So, I don't know, um.
It must have been put on YouTube and not on.
He, he said Channel Six, he said Channel Six as well, cause he puts it up on at the same time. But I don't know how many days he put it up.
Cause one lady came in and said, we haven't seen one since April.
Right.
Yeah.
You mean, really? So, if we're on YouTube, that means we're on the globe then?
That's it.
Yes.
Anybody can see us.
I thought YouTube was for video dogs singing Happy Birthday.
No, it's, it's stupid history.
They watch that first before they watch us.
Yeah.
How many, yeah, how, how long does it stay on YouTube?
Forever.
Forever.
Yep, yeah, um, search uh, NEMC Channel Six, or, or possibly TV Six, depending on how he wrote it. And you just put in Casco and all your meetings will be on there, so you can watch any one you want to.
I don't know.
I don't think I'd like to watch myself. Put me to sleep.
Mike, what, what'd you have?
Stop sign on Melvrum Road, Twenty-Six Mile Road. I almost got nailed today, the second time. Uh, by the time you get up close enough, there's a sign right there. And when you get up close enough to the seat down to the east on Twenty-Six Mile Road, your nose is almost on the blacktop. It happened once before and I didn't.
Is it weeds or what?
No, a sign, the sign.
A new sign or an old sign?
No, a new one.
Is it in the right of way?
I'm sure it is, but it's.
Well, they put it up, don't they?
Yeah.
What sign is, what is this sign for?
A stop sign.
What's that sign? No, no, the stop sign's on the right side. This is on the east side of.
A commercial sign?
It's a county sign.
What do you mean a county sign?
Oh, funny, what does it say?
Road under.
Is that a permanent sign, like?
Yeah, yeah.
County line or?
Library sign?
It's not the one that says Casco Township Paul, wasn't it?
Casco Township Paul.
Well, no, that.
It's a good-sized sign, but by the time you get out there far enough to look to the east, see the traffic.
So, it's on Twenty-Six.
Yes, it's on Melvrum Road. It's actually on Melvrum Road. It may be the library sign.
Yeah, it is the library sign.
I'll have pretty good size. Area form and take a look at it.
Didn't happen again today. It happened once before, and I just blew it off, and it would happen again today.
I know that one gas station in town, you come out of there and you look down towards Grand East, they got about eight signs right there. Depending on the height of your car, you can't see very well, out of the speedway. Uh, the only other thing, uh, Atkins is having their yearly coat collection. And uh, so they wanna get a, what, a busload to take down to the Lions game on Thanksgiving Day. So, if you have any slightly used or new coats you wanna donate, you can do it at, uh, you can bring it to Casco Township. I should have brought the list down here, uh.
It's on the website.
It's on our website. Atkins Pie, uh, Atkinson, Adair, Atkins Burgers in St. Clair Shore, which I wasn't, I'm getting some free plugs here. And the Atkins Rest, was it the Atkins Restaurant in Marine City? Is that the other one? Wherever it is.
It's not up in Marine City, yeah.
I don't know, there was an Atkins something. St. Clair, okay.
There's an Atkins in St. Clair.
That's the one.
Yes.
So, they're all donated to charity, and if you donate the most coats, they will cater a dinner for up to ten people at your location.
That's nice. Well, here's another free plug. On uh, Sunday, October twentieth, Saint James United Church of Christ is sponsoring their annual chili cook-off at Perch Point. Some of the best chili makers in uh, the township. And a beautiful quilt is being raffled and a lovely garden bench by a master craftsman. Doors open at four, um, tickets are eight dollars.
When is this coming?
Sunday, October twentieth, at Perch Point Conservation Club.
I'm gonna lose you down there and check that out.
Yes. It is worthwhile. A lovely bake sale. Uh, dinner includes homemade chili, hot dogs, um, nachos, and desserts. All homemade by all of the wonderful bakers at Saint James.
Don't forget silent auction too.
Oh, and silent auction and a children's craft table.
Well, what, what time is it?
Four o'clock. The doors open at four, and we serve until the chili runs out.
Right, wow.
And gentlemen, I am also, Saint James is looking for, um, uh, what do you call that? People to judge the chili.
Oh.
And I have been told that this year, we will have a, a guest judge, the supervisor of Casco Township.
Oh, yeah.
Is going to.
The current or former one?
The current one.
Give both.
Gee, how'd you talk them into doing that?
Well.
It's chili, not that much talking.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's not much arm twisting.
Free chili, God.
Free chili, really.
Okay, anyone else have anything? Just a quick reminder that our meeting in November is on Monday, November fourth. And uh, because of, we thought we may have a special election on the fifth, so. Saying that, we're up to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.
Does anyone know what, I need.